Okay, great. Ralph Barnes, can you hear us? Ralph, can you hear us?
Ben Stanley, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, thanks.
Here we go.
And I can hear you as well, Commissioner.
We've got an echo.
We have a strong echo. Hey, this will be a test. A little bit of a delay there. Good? Hey, Ben Stanley, would you go ahead and check in one more time? We're trying to see if the sound system will no longer echo.
Yes, I can hear you, Commissioner. It's cutting it out a little bit, but I can hear you now.
Okay. Okay, I think we got it fixed. All right, we'll begin. Welcome, everybody. And we'll start with a prayer, reading, or thought, and followed by a pledge of allegiance. We'll ask someone from the audience to provide one of the two. Linda, here's for the prayer. And do we have someone to lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Eric, thank you. Yes, Linda, thank you.
Let's pray together. Our dear Father, we are so grateful to have the right to even be here, to gather and to make decisions that will help our community and to learn about what is needed. Father, we pray that you will be with those in our community that are having troubles, whether it's health-wise or money-wise, whatever it might be, Father. This group is here today to try to make everyone's life better, and that is a wonderful thing. We appreciate that. Father, we also pray that you will be with the rest of our county and our state and adjoining counties because they have different and similar challenges, and we need to work together, row in the same direction, so that we can do your will. Father, those that are less fortunate than us, we pray that you will find them housing and food and medical care, all of the things that are needed. And, Father, as we go forward in this meeting, please give wisdom and courtesy to everyone that participates. Thank you again, Father, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Linda.
Please repeat the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. We'll now look at items that we should consider as consent. Items, we'll go through the regular agenda to do that. And then after that, we will go to the work session and then return to the regular agenda for things that we need to discuss. So we're looking at-
Mr. Chair, we do have a recognition.
I'm sorry. We do. I would be shot if I skipped over that. I apologize.
So for our employee of the month, it is our nurse supervisor in the immunization clinic, Melissa Sandgren. And she, we've got a nomination letter here, and I'm going to highlight some of the things on it. She was nominated and chosen as the employee of the month because she has just been a stalwart part of our COVID response here at the county. And over the last several years, she has worked long hours. It says here that you're one of the first in in the morning. In fact, you're here so early every morning that you get your own parking spot. Because she gets here before anybody else, and so she got to claim her spot because she's here before everybody else. And then she stays until pretty much almost everybody else has left. And she led the team of nurses that did the COVID vaccinations, as well as all the other vaccinations. And so she continued doing her regular, everyday job while also, on top of that, taking on several vaccination clinics and all of the logistics that went along with that. Something that I found was interesting is apparently her hobby is that she's an archer and has won several awards, but doesn't get to spend nearly as much time with her bow because she's spending too much time here at the county. And Melissa and her husband Ian have four children and two granddaughters. Hopefully, you're going to teach them to shoot the bow here really soon, too. That'd be great. Melissa's been with the county since March of 2015. She supervises 28 nurses. And everyone had nice things to say about her, but we're going to pick just a couple. Several of the coworkers said she has been under extreme stress the last two years, juggling her normal responsibilities as well as those of COVID. But she is always positive, always has a smile for everyone around her. And everyone appreciates that they can go to her with any questions or problems, and she's always willing to help. They said she is the best boss, and we love her. And here is another comment that they said it sums it all up. It said, "I would have to say that Melissa is hands down the best supervisor I have ever worked for. She is always pleasant and even-tempered. I have never heard her raise her voice in frustration, even with all the changes in the immunization clinic and the addition of several COVID clinics at various locations throughout the county these past couple of years. I appreciate the balance and professionalism that Melissa brings to the clinic every single day, and I am so glad that she is receiving this recognition today. You're a great example to all of us, and I'm glad to be a part of your team." So congratulations, Melissa, and we are very grateful to have you, especially during high-stress times. An even-tempered and positive person can make all the difference in the world, and we are so grateful that you came to the county. So, thank you. You have to come up and give us a few words, and then we'll take a picture. It's the hardest part of your job, not balancing 28 nurses through multiple clinics throughout the county. It's giving us a few words-
Exactly.
And then we will come and take a picture with you and give you a few items.
I have no words. I would just rather be in the back and work in the background. This is very uncomfortable.
Well, we appreciate all of your hard work for the county, and we'll come up and take a picture with you.
So when Commissioner Gardner said that you want to spend more time with your bow, my first thought was, a husband or a wife? Did you think the same thing?
It depends on the day.
I was glad that was clarified later.
No, he's actually the one that taught me to shoot.
He taught you?
Yeah.
Very good.
We're bringing slang in.
I know.
B-A-U. We'll come right over here, and you get to hold this nice little thing.
All right. Okay, one, two, three. I'm going to do a couple here. Perfect.
Okay, now we'll get to the consent agenda.
Yes.
I would hate to have an arrow shot in my direction.
I was going to say, that's not one person. I want to make math.
No.
Even stealthily.
Even with a blunted point. Okay, we'll go through first numbers one through 10. Are there any that need to be held?
Six and seven.
Six and seven. Commissioner Gardner, do you have any others?
I don't, no.
I have no others. 11, then, through 20? I have none.
I have none either.
None.
Not for you. Then 21 through 32? I asked that we hold 31 so we could talk to that.
Could we also hold 32 for just a question? I don't know if... Oh, we're good. Okay. I'm looking.
Okay, I understand we need to hold 33 for personnel. And we don't have any for 34, 35, or 36.
Perfect.
We can strike those. Okay. Strike those three items. Okay. Alice?
All right, I have us holding agenda items number six, seven, 31, and 32. And then as far as closed meetings, we're going to hold 33, as stated, and striking 34, 35, and 36.
Okay, that's what I have. Any other comments? Okay, we move those into consent. We'll now go ahead and have a work session from the Public Defender Association. What up, Ben?
Benjamin Young, Utah County Public Defender Association. We just wanted to present on the quarterly report for the first half of the year, semi-annual. So I'll begin with the agenda. So what we're going to talk about, I'm going to pass it to Josh to talk about the workload, the cases that we've been assigned, both in the district court and the social work, excuse me, district court and juvenile court, as well as some of the big achievements we've seen in the social work, which is a newer program that the county funded last year. So we're starting to see the fruits from that. We just wanted to discuss that a little bit with you. After that, I'll take the floor back to go through the budget, where we're at for the year, and kind of a little bit of the details on those. At any time during the presentation, feel free to stop me with questions or hold them to the end, and we'll ask for questions at the end. So pending anything, we'll move forward, and I'll pass it to Josh to talk through. This is an eye test to see how closely you can see it. But Josh will kind of talk-
Luckily, we have a bigger fear.
Okay, perfect, yeah.
Luckily, I printed it off for myself. So this is just, like we said, it's through June 30th. And over on the second to last column is where, you know, the totals are at as far as cases. We've tried to break them down on the left column there as a type. Really, you know, the total number of cases that we're looking at has been the same roughly as previous. I did run some of the numbers just for the beginning weeks of the third quarter, and it does look like there's a bit of a jump, which I assume is because some of the cases that had been referred to justice court appear to be coming back to the district court. So that's something that's kind of a topic or a theme that we're starting to track, as I believe that that will be consistent through the remainder of this year and then heading into the future. But as I believe is typical, you know, our person crimes, property crimes, drug crimes are kind of the more, the majority of our cases. Drug, typically, drug crimes has been the leader in the past with diverting cases to justice court that did drop. I imagine that that will start to come back up as well as we go forward in the remainder of this year and into next. Also added after these numbers were ran, we did pick up a couple more homicide cases. So we do have one capital case right now, as you can see there. Justice court, as of last year, was quite a bit higher, almost double the previous numbers that we've seen. And so we've tried to address that by allocating resources there. And as I said, we're kind of monitoring that to see what we need to do to address any of those cases coming back to district court. What's not reflected on these numbers here, we do run or do the defense work for the drug court, mental health court, and veterans court. And those typically have a standard number of participants. We have attorneys that are assigned to handle or appear in those courts and work with them, too. And we'll get to social workers, but we do have, and we've been able to have one of our social workers actually help out quite a bit on the side of mental health court, which has been a real help to us.
Could you go back? That, what's the difference between, is that aggregate or aggravated person? What is that?
Aggravated person.
Aggravated person.
Uh-huh. So typically, and this is all just broken down based on statutory charges. And so if it's an aggravated assault, that's considered an aggravated person.
And as DUI, does that include all illicit drugs beyond alcohol?
So anything, we try to mirror what the charged offense is. And so for DUI, that shows you that we had 50 felony-level DUIs. That would be DUIs where somebody had prior DUIs.
And that would include all of alcohol, any other-
Correct, yeah, it can. So juvenile delinquency cases, those would be cases that are similar to, you know, like a DUI or an assault or a theft. So you have the numbers there to 29. Again, similar, the case totals are on the second to last column there. Welfare cases would be cases in which there's parental rights involved. Those are cases that can be pretty intense and last quite a long time. The appeals there, it says JV appeals. That is, appeals are 18 appeals that are not just JV, but are juvenile court, but district court as well. So the big thing that we've been able to take advantage of and are grateful for is the social workers. So we have three social workers right now that handle the district court and two that were funded by the IDC for juvenile court. And so this is just referring to the total referrals from the district court, on district court cases, to social workers. Program referrals would be, you know, if I have a case and I'm trying to get somebody that may have a substance abuse issue or something like that, and I want to see if there's a program that they would qualify for, that would be what a program referral is referring to. And so in that situation, I would make contact with the social worker, explain to them, here's kind of where I think we could help this person, and kind of what the goal would be. They would then meet with the person, they can do evaluations and talk to them about what would best fit them, and then make contact with any number of programs available to get them either a bed there or connected to that program. Those are broken down by pre-sentence program releases. So somebody that would be arrested and then have a program available to them before there's either a trial or a plea resolution. And then post-sentence would be, they've received a sentence, are incarcerated on that sentence, and then have an early release to a program. And so you look at, there's some numbers there on cost savings. That is not for our office, but for county, based on jail time that had been imposed. But that individual was able to be released to a program, and so that additional jail time did not ultimately get served. Looking at the cost per day, that's the savings there. Competency referrals is a big, competency is something that we deal with quite frequently. Competency refers to mental illness, mental health issues that a particular defendant may have. And if that's significant enough to interfere with their ability to either understand the proceedings against them or consult with their attorney in a, you know, in any type of a way, then we would look at their competency to proceed in that case. And sometimes, I'm not a mental health professional, and so, you know, sometimes it's obvious there's, this individual may have some of these potential problems. And so I can, you know, on the cases where it's, it could go either way, I'm able to refer those to a social worker who can go and meet with the individual and then let me know, yeah, I think we should file a competency petition in this case or not. So you look at the number there, 76 referrals were made, and of those 76, 34 had a recommendation to file a competency. It's kind of a big help in that the time that competency takes is pretty drastic. And a lot of times, people are in custody for those times. And so just the time that it takes to have somebody, you know, if we file a petition with the court, the court will appoint an evaluator to go and meet and make a report, make a report whether or not this person is competent, competent to proceed. That can take up to 45 days, and typically, they will be in custody for that timeframe. And so there's a lot of cost savings and a lot of benefit to a lot of these people who would ultimately likely be deemed to be competent. They're not wasting time in custody. We can move forward with their case and go that way with that case. So having the social workers is really a game changer. Even speaking with juvenile court attorneys at our office, they've made the same comment, that the amount of help that they can provide, not only to the attorneys, but to the defendants and the people involved, is tremendous. You know, before we had social workers, sometimes it would be on the attorney to try to track down a program for a client. And so really, for the county, you're using social work time instead of attorney time to accomplish those things. And so that's another savings to the county.
Do you have a breakdown on social worker hours, the way you did for the attorney hours?
We don't today. I think, I know that they do track it pretty consistently, so we can definitely add that for the next presentation we do, if you'd like.
Thank you.
So if you don't, are there any other questions about the social workers, or kind of where we're at with our cases at this point in time? Okay, I'll let Ben talk about the numbers then and turn it back to him. Thanks.
Appreciate it.
And one thing, while we're on this slide, colloquially, having talked to the social workers, Aaron, the head social workers, they're pretty tapped out on resources and would be able to provide more support, handle more referrals if they had more social workers. So the only, the limiting factor is the number of hours in the day. Unfortunately, they're subject to reality like the rest of us, but-
That's why I ask.
And, but yeah, we can definitely provide that to the county as a follow-up. And again, these cost savings that are listed here are outside of our organization. It's about $300,000 is our cost to it, and the savings to the county is about one and a half times what we're spending. And that doesn't count the attorney time that's saved by the social workers being able to perform tasks that attorneys were historically performing. It doesn't count the expedited process of contracts that we would have contracted out to perform these services and things like that. So a lot of efficiencies we see in 100%, it's a great savings for us and worth our time, and we're just showing the county that in addition to benefiting us, it's benefiting other organizations outside of us. So now, as we talk about the budget, a couple things to highlight. In December, January, we were approved for non-lapsing funding from the IDC again for $230,000. So that funding had to be spent by June 30th. It kind of skews our numbers, makes it look like we've spent more than we have. So it shows that we're at 56%. It would have been a little bit lower than that if that wasn't included in our budget number, but it's extra funding that would have increased our top-line budget as well. Digging into the next three slides is the detail of each of those areas, employee-related expenses, program expenses, which are defense resources, and then overhead expenses. So on the next slide, if you're ready, next slide, this is a breakout of salaries, 401K contributions, health insurance. We're right on track to where we should be. I don't anticipate any overages at the end of the year with the budget. Health insurance includes an extra month ahead, so that has seven months of premiums in it, and then the HSA contributions are made at the beginning of the year. So that skews it to look like it's higher than it actually is. But in summary, we're right on track to where we should be for this point in the year.
So Ben, just a question. Do you follow the county's health insurance plan with Select Health? Or do you have your own? And with your, with your, with your benefits, is that the same or is it separate? How do you, I'm not, I wasn't quite sure on that.
So we have, we have our own. It doesn't fall under the county's. We're not eligible to participate in the county's programs. But what we've done is we've been very careful to offer parity so that the premiums that we're paying on ours, from the employee's perspective, the benefits that they receive, deductibles and such, are comparable to what the county offers. So every year, I'll sit down with HR, kind of get what the county's benefits are, and make sure that ours are parity.
Okay. So do you have Select Health, then? Are you under Select Health?
I have it from the military personally, but-
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
So you have Select Health? Okay. Interesting. And on the benefit side, too, do you also work with, who's our, who's our benefit? Is that Sultis? Is that, I think that's Sultis. Gallagher? Do you work with Gallagher as well?
We work with GBS. That handles our 401K through Empower and health insurance and dental insurance, but-
Interesting. Okay.
But I mean, we're, if someone wants to put me in touch with Sultis, I'm happy to compare them to what GBS is offering us.
Which is, with our benefits, our benefits group, you know, when we did our change, we were very, very happy with what the changes were, and so I was just curious on your end-
Yeah, I'd be very interested to-
If you followed kind of that same lead or not.
Yeah, I'll definitely reach out and see if there's some efficiencies or cost savings that could be-
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, I appreciate that feedback. Any other questions on the employee-related? Defense resources, so there was some IDC funding for non-lapsing that provided additional attorneys to cover the attorney time that was spent on the bomb case at the beginning of the year until the death penalty was taken off the table on that specific case. However, that case continued, and we saw really high expenses in experts and investigations that were the expenses incurred post-death being taken off the table. In addition, we're just seeing increases in costs with contractors, investigators, experts, and transcripts, just kind of across the board with inflation. Nothing that we're particularly concerned about or that's going to be outside the scope of this year's budget, but something that we're just cognizant of as we're trying to find cost savings and opportunities there. Pending any questions on that, we'll go on to general overhead expenses. And like I said, on this one, again, the IDC gave us the, it was about $230,000, about 100 of it was for defense resources, and 130 of it was for office expenses and computer tech upgrades, which we're able to spend, had to be spent by June 30th. We were able to spend all of that. That'll all be reimbursed through the IDC to Utah County, so no cost to the county on those expenditures.
That's why we see that 77%?
Exactly, yeah. Where those spiked high, but really, it's $130,000 less, so. So those are kind of the detail of all of our budget areas. Are there any questions that the commission has or?
No.
Anything else you'd like us to, we'll add that for the social workers for next time, but-
On capital murder? Are those cases increasing in Utah, other counties?
I'll let Josh colloquially speak to that.
I haven't, last time we looked at those numbers with Salt Lake, who does also keep track, they were significantly higher than Utah County. I don't know, we'd have to go back and look at past numbers to really look at that, but I can add that to the list, too.
It's just a thought as I was going through the budget here.
Salt Lake, Salt Lake definitely is quite a bit higher, but obviously, it's a larger population zone. population zone.
Okay.
All right. We appreciate your time and, uh, at any time, if there's any more details you want, we're happy to provide them.
Thank you, Ben.
This was great. Thank you so much.
Okay. Then we'll move to, um, agenda item six, Commissioner Lee.
Yes, I'm wondering if, if we could probably address agenda items six and seven together, if that's all right?
Mm-hmm.
And maybe I'll just kind of put them out there. Agenda item six is a resolution, um, appointing to the Housing Authority Board and agenda item seven is a resolution appointing to the Lake Authority. And so on item number six, well, first off, does anybody want to speak to this? Is there any public comments or there are some, maybe we should take that first if that's all right?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm item seven.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do six and seven together.
I'm Carolyn, Carolyn Jardine. I'm here representing Conserv Utah Valley and appreciate the time that you all have spent with us over the last few weeks talking about the upcoming, uh, management of the lake by the new Utah Lake Authority. And as we've already spoken about and, um, as we've spoken to other members of the, the board for the ULA coming up, one of the things that we're particularly concerned about, both as residents of Provo, Orem, other towns in Utah County, but also as people who are particularly concerned about the environment and our natural resources, is how the Utah Lake Authority is being shaped to take management of the lake. As we have all watched, um, this move towards having authorities be created at the legislative level to help with management of different issues in Utah is something that's a little bit, uh, new in the last forty years or so. But they come with some challenges and then we've seen that with UTA, we've seen that with the Inland Court Authority and some of the other authorities that are kind of working their way into, um, existence. One of the main issues that comes up with authorities is the ethical management of the, the thing that they're charged with, uh, taking care of and maintaining public trust. And we strongly encourage, as you as a, a commission are looking at nominating one of the three of you to serve on that, uh, board, that you really think about the ethics that are involved with helping to run this, um, authority. And we were very encouraged that Representative Brammer made sure that in the original language for the ULA statute, that it is, uh, in addition to the, the typical, um, code of ethics that's part of, um, Utah State statute, it went even a little bit further in the code to set out, uh, guidelines for what constitutes a conflict of interest or affiliation, um, for voting members as well as for the executive director. We want to make sure that you guys really think about that code and make sure that there's no conflict of interest or affiliations that might be present. Um, with any of the three of you and whichever one of you takes, um, the responsibility to sit on that board, um, can do so with clear and free of any potential conflicts. That's one thing. Um, the other, the other two issues that we want to just kind of put out as you're thinking about being part of the ULA, the second one is making sure that we're looking at managing the, uh, the Utah Lake, um, from a balanced place. And what we mean by that is a balance between economic interests and scientific, um, data and understanding of what's best for the lake. Not all development is bad development, not all development's good development. Um, so we need to look at, you know, we understand that the Utah Lake Authority is primarily put together as a taxing entity to do development. Um, some of those developments could be good for the lake, some of those developments could be very negatively impactful for the lake. And so making sure that there's a scientific data-backed approach to any development decision in or around the lake is extremely critical. The third is making sure that not only do we have a data-backed and scientific approach, it's that we actually make sure that we are collaborating both with public officials, private entities, and also the scientific community to make sure that those decisions are open and transparent and that we have a lot of public dialogue and input before any decisions are made. So those are our strong encouragements to all of you and just appreciate your willingness to, um, open the floor up for this and excited to see how we move forward with the management of Utah Lake in the future. Thank you.
Is it, is it your understanding that the Utah Lake Authority Board has taxing authority?
Yes.
The legislature stripped that out.
Did they? I don't think so. I think that's a big part of it. There's a tax schedule that every resident of Utah County, I believe, gets taxed, it's like two dollars a month or something like that towards it, but I, we can go back and look.
Yeah, because they, they stripped that out in place, they funded it with, um, with an ongoing appropriation.
Oh.
Of the one and a half million dollars.
I'm behind. Thank you. I'll go back and double check that.
Because that was the sticking point all along.
Yeah.
With the areas, it was, was that, that taxing. At first it started off, there was going to be a tax across the entire county, any, 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 um, municipality that had wastewater or management, wastewater management.
Right.
And so anybody that had a sewer connection, let's put it that way.
Right.
And then that ran into a lot of hiccups back and forth and at the last second, I'm, I'm trying to remember that if I'm remembering correctly, but it's, they took that and struck that out and then said, let's just do an ongoing, which makes it unprecedented for an ongoing appropriation of, I think, one point five million dollars.
I think I'll have to go back and double check that because that is a little bit news to me.
Yeah, because you said that and I was like.
But I'll double, we'll double check. I mean, obviously it is what it is, whatever's in the statute now. Um, to be completely, uh, straightforward about this, one of the ongoing concerns, in my opinion, um, I can't speak on behalf of all of Conserv Utah Valley for this, but having any entity that is constricted to just Utah County that's funding the ongoing management of Utah Lake, to me, does seem problematic because the lake is a resource for the entire state. Um, the watershed goes beyond Utah County, uh, it impacts Great Salt Lake. I mean, it's really interesting that we're having any discussions about Great Salt Lake that don't also always include Utah Lake because Great Salt Lake would be pretty empty without Utah Lake.
And my opinion is the most important lake in the state of Utah.
Well, especially because it's freshwater.
You might want to go to Lake.
There are living things in it, right? So, so I do think that if that is the case, that if the taxi, like taxation of Utah County specifically to help support Utah Lake, I think that is probably a, a move in the right direction because the state should be responsible.
Right.
As a whole to help manage the lake.
It's also interesting that it was only people that have sewer connections because all of those with septics south of the lake leach into the lake and are a huge part of the cleanup.
Yep, and they didn't even have, that wasn't even a part of it, so yeah.
Right, exactly.
And not just cleanup, but also just ongoing proper management of the lake, right?
Right, yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, fantastic. Conserv Utah Valley is happy to be a resource going forward and appreciate the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So with that, just for some background information, unless there's others, others, okay.
Excuse me, Allison, by any chance was there anyone online that want to speak to this? Okay, go ahead.
So I, I currently sit on both these boards, um, you know, the, the Housing Authority and the Utah Lake Authority, um, but with the, with the transition that, that's evidently coming, um, in, in January, um, it, I, I felt since it was new enough with both of these, you'll see on number six, there's another recommendation for another individual to be on that board. And so with that transition with a new board member, it made sense that you go through a process that we'd kind of go through, instead of doing it and then doing it again and on going through that. So number six, uh, there is a lady on there named April Smith that has been recommended. I think you've received the, uh, letters or the emails that kind of gave what she has done in the past with Provo Housing Authority, so she's highly qualified. And, and the, uh, Utah Housing Authority recommends her as an individual to, to, to fill a spot. And then of course mine would be that second and that's the reason why that, that is blank, uh, to fill that. And that way we can go through the process of training a new board members at the same time. On the authority, the Lake, the, the Lake Authority Board, um, it's new enough that it would, to me, as I was looking at this, it's, it would seem weird to go through it for six months and then turn right around and have to start all over again with a new member.
Well, sort of, but also you bring a lot of knowledge to, as they, as the, as the Lake Authority gets up and running, because you served on the Lake Commission, I think that you bring a lot of knowledge to that. And, and I think having to have a new board member in six months, um, is a, is, is a small inconvenience compared to the knowledge and experience that you bring to the board.
Well, and there's some, I, I think that there's, because they, they are adding, I can't remember how many different positions they, they added, that board grew from the, from the.
Right, right. And that, and exactly. And so as a lot of the new people come, having people that have good experience and knowledge like you, I think will be valuable to the new members. And then having a new member come in six months, that's just the way I looked at it. I thought you would bring a lot of value to that board. Um, and as, you know, and as, as a county commissioner, I, if you're willing to, I mean, I totally see where you're coming from, that having to train new board members might be a little difficult, but you bring a lot of knowledge to that board and I think that that's a good thing for us to have, so that you can maybe impart some of that knowledge to those new board members before a new commissioner comes to sit on that board.
Out of curiosity, when's the next, excuse me, Lake Authority meeting?
Hmm, I'd have to look on my calendar and see.
Is that in October?
Yeah, September.
September, next month.
My, my, my recommendation on these two, um, I, I know Commissioner Gardner, you're looking at housing, housing's a pretty important part of yours. And so I, I would recommend that we place you on the Housing Authority Board and then Commissioner Sakovic on the Lake Authority Board, um, uh, just for that, that continuity of the two times. I, I think that it would be, I mean, there, there's enough going on there that I think that it, even, even though I could bring something to that for sure, I don't see why, you know, you couldn't bring it along and then move it forward.
Yeah. And I would be fine accepting the housing board and, and I mean, and I would be, have no problem with Commissioner Sakovic doing the lake, but I just think you would bring a lot of knowledge for the next six months. And then in January, transitioning to Commissioner Sakovic.
Out of curiosity, there's one in September, the, the one after that would be what, November?
Yeah, it's, it's like, I don't remember. I just, I just, all I do is follow my schedule. I don't.
You just go where you're told to go.
I just go where I see it pop up on the calendar. Yeah, it, it seems like it meets, I want to say quarterly, but I'm not sure on that. It's, I think it's quarterly.
Because what we could do is that you would stay on and I could be a guest if you wanted to go that direction, because I would like to be on that board. Um, but you could stay on and be there for the September as we get things rolling and I could go attend as a guest and see where it goes.
So we do an appointment, but the appointment has a time in which you start? We could do that.
I think we could. Because I really do think that you bring a lot of, of, a lot of knowledge, especially coming from the, from the Utah Lake Commission, transitioning to the Authority Board. I think any, any experience that people have will be helpful and you've got a lot of really good experience there and I value that.
So if we, if, if the resolution had the appointment, but the appointment would be?
Like valid November first.
Yeah, something like that.
December first, whatever's the, the latest.
Yeah.
And then you'd just come, then you'd come as the guest and, and then sit there and, because I know we're working through bylaws and a few things like that, they're going along with it.
Right, and I think you would bring a lot of value to that.
Okay. Well, I, I'm, I'm fine. I'm not trying to skip out on work, I'm just trying to make sure that it, that it works, you know.
I'm just trying to squeeze every last bit of talent out of you that we can.
Okay, that, that's, that's fair. I think that's fair.
You bring, you bring a lot of great experience.
Um, I don't know when the next one is and I don't think anybody here knows after September, if it's November or December.
Uh, let me see.
I don't think they stated like the cadence of the meetings yet and it may not have been formally checked because obviously the witch is getting started, but they did state that they would have.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, go ahead.
Uh, Rob Moore, County Attorney's Office, my suggestion, you just add to the resolution, uh, approve and adopt it effective the first day of December twenty twenty-two, if that's what you want to do.
And the housing would start, what was the date on that one?
You could start that one immediately.
Immediately?
Because I think that.
Yeah, along with April.
Yeah, whenever.
So the Utah Lake Commission's is September fifteenth.
Okay.
Um, I'm trying to see if there's another one after that. I don't know, Rachel, are you on? If you could, if you could, um, see on the calendar? If there's one in the later part?
I did just get a message that they only did determine every two months, so they're doing September and November.
And November. So if we did the December first, that, that would work?
That would work fine.
Yeah.
So what I would do is I would go as your guest in September and, and November to get a feel for how things are going.
Those are public meetings anyway, so you could go no matter what.
That sounds great.
It works.
It works. Absolutely.
Okay.
So want me, want me to make a motion then?
Please, yes.
I'll make a motion, uh, that we approve and authorize the signing of the, of the two resolutions, um, on the Utah County Housing Authority and the one name is April Smith and the other name is Amelia Powers Gardner. Be appointed to the, to that board.
Okay.
Now that one will just be effective immediately.
Now, and so for number six works effective immediately.
Yeah.
Right. And then number seven, we'll do the dates. Yeah.
And then why would just wrap up the number six then? Would we need to do a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes three zero.
And then I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve and authorize the signing of a resolution appointing to the Utah Lake Authority Board, Commissioner Tom Sakovic, uh, effective December first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes three zero. So that concludes items number six and seven. Number thirty-one, Public Works. Um, there's been some questions about whether we should be using, uh, rock chips and oil for the, uh, Squaw Peak Road and I had talked to you earlier about this, is this a Forest Service project and we're in support of what they're asking us to do? This is their land? And how long they've been doing this?
Sure. Uh, Richard Nelson, fellow courts director, um, the, the item that's before you is a, a supplement to an agreement we did earlier this year with Forest Service. Uh, they, they had originally requested that we do a chip sill on the Squaw Peak Road. Uh, they came back, apparently they've had some additional funds and wanted us to do a double chip sill. So basically we, we go in, we chip sill it one, one day, let it cure overnight, come in and do it again the second day, and so it gives a, a double thickness on there. Uh, that work was all completed last week. Uh, the fog sill that goes on top was completed earlier this week, uh, so that is, has been done. Uh, this is a, a method that, that both the county and the Forest Service have used for many years, several decades. Um, it's, it's a, um, an inexpensive way to put a, a new workhorse on the, on the top of the road. Now, it, it's not going to fix all the imperfections in the road, it's not going to be like new asphalt, but it's, it's about, oh, fifteen percent of the cost of doing new asphalt. So it's a, it's a considerably cheaper way to do it and it provides a, a longevity to that asphalt, especially if the asphalt underneath it is in good shape. It seals that, that underlying asphalt and helps keep it, uh, longer, keep the life in it longer so that you can, you can get more out of it. Um, it does provide a, a, like I say, a wear surface, so it's a, a rougher texture on the surface. Uh, in places like Squaw Peak Road, uh, where it's steep and windy, uh, this is actually an easier installation method than, than hot mix asphalt because of the, the type of equipment you use and, and the, the grades that are involved on places like that and around the, the sharp hairpin turns. Uh, so this is something that we can do in a couple of days versus two or three weeks if we're, if we're doing hot mix asphalt. So places, there, there are definitely places where hot mix is, is the better application. There are places where a slurry sill or a, a micro surface are the better application. There are places that chip sill is the best application. So I don't know if that answered your question or if you have others?
It does. I just want to make sure the public was hearing this because there were some questions. I want to make sure they can come back and look at and hear that.
Sure.
Out of curiosity, does this, uh, crack like, uh, regular asphalt does? Uh, I'm thinking, you know, hot part of the year and then the cold and winter.
So that.
Is it more resilient?
The way asphalt works is if there's a crack in the underlying surface and the, the The way asphalt works is if there's a crack in the underlying surface in the base asphalt course, over time, that crack will propagate up through whatever you put on top of it, even if it's hot mix asphalt, that crack will come up through, it may take a few years, but it eventually will come, so if you happen to see a road that's had an asphalt surface put over an old concrete road, you'll see those joints just like they were on the concrete road, they'll propagate up through that new asphalt.
That was all I wanted to know, any other, any other hints?
Thanks.
Make a motion to, I'll make a motion, since I stopped, but I'll make a motion, we adopt and approve item number 31.
Second.
Yeah, you second, we're good.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes 3-0. Now we're in item number 32, Commissioner Lee.
So Rudy and others, I'm sure there's plenty others working on this, this is great, I've read down through it, the only question that I have, as I was trying to, I was trying to pull it out of this, but I didn't quite see it, maybe it's in there and I'm not picking it up, and that is, is that when we go through a replacement process in which we are taking, say, say it's a five-year, so we're taking a fifth every year, what happens when, does it stop at the fifth on the pulling out for the replacement, even though we don't necessarily change it out, the equipment, say we keep it for seven years, or, as I've understood it, we continue to pull that fifth out on the equipment, and so now, instead of having five fifths, we have seven fifths?
It's like the fifth quarter cent.
And this, then it comes down to a bigger question that I've been asked over the years by departments, and that is, is that if that's the case in which the departments are putting money in to a replacement program, and then they don't actually use it when it's supposed, you know, at that time for the replacement that they were designated to do, and they start building up a fund that's in there, how does the departments know how much money is in there overall, and can that extra money that is not being used can be used for something else, you know, to?
Like something new that they need?
Like something new, yeah, because that, I've been asked that question, I don't know how many times, being a commissioner, and I've tried to find out where that's at, and it's always, well, it's not necessary that we have it in an account, it kind of floats over here, and then we just kind of take care of it, so I don't see that in here, so that's the reason why I'm asking the question.
That's a good question, you know we do everything we can to just mess with the departments, that's our game plan anyways, right now, when we set these things up, the intent is that we would set them up, that we would draw, how do we say, we would charge the departments an annual amount based upon the estimated life of the piece of equipment, so that we're recovering the cost of the equipment plus an inflation factor, assuming that, you know, things are going to go up in cost in the future. Once we get to that, say it's a five-year asset, we don't continue to charge them for that, because we've already charged them for that. Now, where we run into problems sometimes is we have some things that are estimated to be five years for depreciation purposes, but in reality, they're around for 10 years, and so if you get in a situation like that, you can be underserving them by not charging extra, because five years after the initial end date, it may be significantly more expensive to replace, but that's the intent, and that's how we wrote this, is that we would withdraw that amount over the estimated useful life of the asset, whatever it is, and so that money would be in that fund. Now, we are happy to not replace it right at five years, for instance, if it doesn't need to be replaced right away, why would we do that, let's hold on to it, but that money will still stay there for them, and we tried to incorporate that into here, and I thought that was in, you know, in what we put in this policy, but that is 100% the intent, and, you know, occasionally you have a piece of equipment that won't end up being replaced, for whatever reason, you know, maybe technology has changed, maybe your operations have changed, whatever, and the question is, can we use that for something else? I don't believe that's specifically addressed in the policy.
I would say, because maybe if that's the case, we have something that will last longer than we had anticipated, instead of keeping putting the money off to the side that won't be used for what was originally intended, instead of messing with the budget, maybe we could take that amount, put it into a reserve or back in the general fund somewhere.
I mean, we could, but the intent of this is to provide for future replacement of this equipment, because we haven't been doing a good job of replacing our equipment in the county, because it's hard when every single year, you have to try and say, okay, well, you know, ask for additional piece of equipment and everything like that, it's much easier to do it through this methodology, I would prefer not to continue charging the departments for this, once they have paid in what they have, what the future cost is estimated to be, then why should they continue to be paying in for that?
How detailed are you going to be, is it right down to the?
We actually have a list of each, we have a list of each asset that's going to be contained in here.
So how hard would it be to run an annual report for the departments to see what they have and kind of where they're on track?
Actually, not hard at all, because we intend to maintain this listing in our fixed asset system, as we do with our vehicles and other equipment that's being depreciated in, you know, in public works funds or whatever, so yeah, it will not be difficult at all to do that. Yeah, we don't want to have anything hidden, I joke about messing with the departments, it's just the opposite, we want to do everything we can to help the departments and to make it easier, and that's why we started this program to begin with, but it will, we want to make it very simple for several reasons, one, so that they can know, but also, I don't want to put any more work on our team at the end of the year when we're doing budget to look at the numbers for the next year, so we want to make it as simple and easy to access as possible.
Yeah, could we add a Section 8 and just put that in there and state that, and say that would write, that we'd give an annual report to the department heads on their equipment replacement?
Well, I think we have language in there that we would provide a listing to them within, as part of the budget process, I don't remember exactly where it's at, so that they can tell us, are they planning to replace this asset in the current year, or maybe that's in our budget work papers, I'll have to look, I'll have to double check on that, make sure it's in there, I'm in the process of, you know, all the budget stuff working right now, so I don't recall if we put that language in here, or if it's, and rather than keep the commission, well.
It's the end of Section 5, equipment inventory listings will be distributed to departments annually for review and update.
That sounds like it is.
Departments will complete the inventory listing and submit it to purchasing.
I thought it was in here, I was sure it was, but I just, you know, thank you. So it is in there, that's intent, we need to keep them well-informed.
For review, and I'm assuming that that's, when we were saying, the inventory, we're talking about the physical, is that also the financial aspect of where they're at in the process?
Oh, absolutely.
So that's, I mean, if they're, so if they're two years into it, then they've got two fifths?
Yeah.
If it's a five-year?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, that's what we're planning, so everybody would know, because they need to know.
Okay, good.
Thank you for your work on this, I know this was a long process, so.
It's an important process.
Absolutely.
Absolutely important process, and when I came on board, I realized that this was a need, so we talked to the bosses, and we moved forward, and it's coming to fruition, and we're so grateful for it.
Your integrity is pretty strong, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, I'll make a motion then, that we adopt number 32 on our agenda.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes 3-0, thank you, Rudy. Okay, I think that concludes those regular agenda items, are there any other public comments? Online, Alice? None? Any here? Seeing none, we will now move over into our closed session, thank you, everyone.